I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excellent. We have all but one council member tonight, Councilmember and Deputy Mayor Spivey is absent and excused. I'd like to first turn the floor over to Councilmember Lamb for a personal privilege.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. While I was gone on winter break with my family in California, the city of Bothell lost a member of our family. Tim Keel was an employee in our Public Works Department. He was also a friend of my wife's and mine for many, many years. He was an incredibly good, kind, warm person. He was actually the very first employee in the city of Bothell that I ever met when I moved here. And he was someone who was unfailingly positive, who was unfailingly warm and gracious to the people that he worked with, to the people that he interacted with as citizens. His wife, Mary Jo, also worked for the city in our fire department. She is every bit as kind and gracious and warm as her husband. I deeply miss Tim. He was a great guy. He was someone who was taken from us too early. I know that you and I have discussed this, that as mayor you have the power to issue proclamations. I know that Mary Jo is still in grieving, and I know that your heart, and you've expressed, is that at the appropriate time you'd like to honor Tim's life and his service to the city of Bothell at a subsequent meeting. So I just wanted to raise that tonight, ask for a moment of silence in Tim's memory, and then let you, in your discretion as mayor, decide the appropriate manner and appropriate time to honor a really, really good man.
Perfect question. That time right now.
Thanks.
Great. Thank you, everyone. I will hopefully at the next meeting or following have the opportunity to work with the staff to write up proclamation. And clerk, you would be the one to help me out with that, I imagine. Okay, good. All right, next item on the agenda is our meeting agenda approval. Just to update everybody kind of on the schedule for the evening, first we do have our advisory board and commission interviews for around an hour to hour and 10 minutes. After that will be a study session regarding the, I think we actually have a presentation, the Committee to End Homelessness, the draft strategic plan that we'll be able to hear. After that, we're going to be taking a break, and at the same time we'll have an executive session regarding property acquisition. Following that, we will have a discussion regarding direct Wayne Golf Course intent to offer the Front Nine and Clubhouse area. At that point, actually after break, I'll be recusing myself from the conversation. I do believe it's right, based upon who I see here this evening, to have public comment. We will need to appoint somebody to lead the meeting after my departure, after the break. So if anybody would like to make a motion, Councilmember Evans?
I move that we have Councilmember Lamb direct the meeting.
I can second that. Any discussion? Call in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So a vote of four to two. Councilmember Lamb, you'll take over the conversation after the meeting. And there will be public comment after the executive session. Perfect. Is any other changes anybody would like to make to tonight's agenda? Councilmember Sandberg?
For the executive session tonight, I wanted to add a discussion of personnel matters. It would be brief, five minutes, I believe.
Okay. Sounds good. Anything else? Councilmember Lamb?
Is there a possibility we can move up the last item on our agenda in the public comment period, since there's people here, so they don't have to wait an hour and a half to talk?
No, we have scheduled interviews this evening that people have been given their times over a week ago.
Can we move the executive session to the end of the meeting?
No.
Executive session is pertinent to conversations. Anything else?
Just for the projected agenda.
Our projected agenda is not scheduled for discussion this evening, but you want to take an opportunity to discuss?
Yeah, I had two items. I had asked the city attorney to provide a timeline to council on when, what actions and what dates the council would have to take to add any measures to the 2015 ballot. So I'd like that to be a discussion item at next week's meeting. We've had some conversations about a new public bond. We've had conversations about an operating, maintenance and operating levy for roads, an advisory vote for fireworks. And so I think it's, it'd be good for us to understand what the timeline is this year to put any measures on the ballot for November 2015. And then I was, I would like to get from the planning department what our schedule is for comprehensive plan review. I'd like to know between now and June 30th what nights we're going to be discussing, what elements. We potentially have hundreds of pages to review, and I want us to, I want to have a clear roadmap on how we're going to tackle that task. And I was hoping that since next week is, does not have a very full agenda, we could start tackling any of the elements next week at our March 17 meeting. And then also for the projected agenda to be, yet to be scheduled in first or second quarter, I would like to be placed on that, in that placeholder section, council discussion on bikini barista potential code changes or enforcement issues.
Okay. Regards to the comp plan conversation, I don't know that we could get as specific to say which night, because a lot of that depends on us as we're discussing the comp plan. So I don't know that we could say, you know, first council meeting we're going to discuss this, second council meeting would be this. I think it's really dependent on how we're progressing through the comp plan. But city manager, maybe you'd have a thought on that, or Bill?
Actually, Mayor, I'd probably ask our community development director to provide some commentary.
Thanks, Bob. The commission is beginning what we're calling its first integrated review tomorrow night when they're, they're looking for, tomorrow night they're going to look at all of the planning area-wide elements. There are, I think, 12 of them. And when they're done with the planning area-wide elements, they'll, they'll move on to their review of the subarea, the updated subarea plans. And then following that, they'll review findings, conclusions, and a recommendation to you, and then they'll hand off to you. So we think that they'll be done by the last Wednesday of this month. So, so they're not, they're not finished yet. They don't, they don't have a recommendation to send to you.
Would we potentially take it down in the same order, though, as the topics come out?
Well, it, it makes sense to start with the planning area-wide elements, because they provide the sort of the umbrella, goals, policies, and actions. And then the subarea plans are the small area refinements of those. So, yeah, that's a logical progression.
Seems to make sense. I don't know what your feelings are on that.
That sounds good. I noticed on the April 7 meeting agenda, the projected agenda, comprehensive plan discussion was not, and I just wanted to make sure that was an inadvertent omission.
It's not inadvertent. It was moved to April 21. We still have to do environmental review. We'd like for that to be done, or at least in process by the time it gets to you.
Well, I would still like to have an idea of what you think is a reasonable schedule on how, you know, you know, elements, planning area-wide, subarea to, so that we know, based on the final due date of June 30th, we know if we're on schedule, behind schedule, ahead of schedule, as we're conducting our review.
Sure. Your projected agenda does include all of the meetings, not by topic, but it has all the meetings leading up to June 30th. And moving that first meeting from April 7 to April 21 does not reduce the total number of meetings that are being devoted to the topic.
I think I follow what you're saying. You want to make sure that we're able to schedule enough time to get through all the items that we need to. So I believe Bill and Bob can work together on that to make sure that we are through it. And we control a lot of that discussion as well, to make sure that we're reading the documents before they get to us, and as we're in this meeting can effectively get through the items on it. Does anybody else have any comments regards to meeting agenda or projected agenda? No? Councilmember Ryan?
I didn't know we were still talking about the meeting agenda.
Well, the reason why is because I didn't look at these three, and we jumped into projected agenda before chance came through. So. All right, well, so jumping to the next subject, which is our study session, AB 15026.
I think Andy has more comments there.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to talk about the, I have concern about Councilmember Lamb leading the meeting in your absence, and mainly because I've got information here today that 10 companies that you own, he has, he's the agent in. And so I feel it's inappropriate to have him actually even part of the conversation on the back nine of Wayne Golf Course. I'm sorry.
We're not discussing the back nine tonight.
Councilmember Lamb?
I have a question. If the mayor isn't going to be here in the discussion, and he has interest in some companies, whatever, I guess I just don't see how that's going to affect our discussion on the back nine or the front line. I mean, I really don't. But if that's a concern if you're, you know, I mean, if you wanted to look deeper, maybe there's other people that have interest in some of those companies or something. You know, I mean, this can go on and on and on. I think we, we understand what the process is, that the mayor has recused himself, and let's see how it goes. I mean.
I think we've had, I mean.
Can I, do I have the floor?
Actually, I think, I think the mayor recognized me.
Yeah.
I don't have any problem having a conversation at the appropriate time. Right now, we have people who are asking, who are waiting to be interviewed by us. I think we should go into those interviews. We're going to be going into an executive session following that. Prior to me chairing the meeting, we can have a conversation about it at that time. But right now, we have people who were scheduled to begin their interviews 10 minutes ago, and I think we should move into that.
Yeah, why don't we take the conversation up right after the break, and you guys can collectively discuss? Okay? You guys okay with that? They voted four to two, so you were on the minority on that subject.
Actually, I didn't vote.
You should have stated your abstention at that time.
I wasn't abstending. I was going to actually offer someone else to take over, but it kind of moved quickly.
I asked for a voice vote in affirmative, asked for a voice vote in the negative, received both. I stated the number of the vote, which was four to two. So, Councilmember Evans?
So I think what the mayor says is we can continue the discussion prior to that, prior to the start of that. Is that okay? I mean, so no decisions, well, decision's been made, but you want to discuss it more, and I'm fine with that. But let's move on with what we've got now, knowing that we'll come back to what we'd like to discuss before we get into that.
Not in executive session, though. I want to have it on, on the dais, or whatever this thing is, this table. Cuedo dais.
I don't know. I guess the vote's taking place, your opportunity to discuss. I asked for discussion on the motion. You did not take the opportunity for discussion, so we have taken a vote, four to two. I didn't hear you abstain. So as far as after we're complete, the vote is taken. This is parliamentary matters that which should have been addressed at the time of the vote. Councilmember Sandberg?
I'd like to move forward with the board and commission interviews and discuss this issue of recusal following that, following those, those two agenda items and prior to the agenda item for Wayne Golf Course. We can discuss it then.
Well, I agree that we should move forward. So let's do so. There's so many people that have signed up to serve on parks and boards. We are a few minutes behind, but that's okay. So addressing the folks that are here in the audience, you are certainly welcome to stay for this discussion, as has been policy for 10 years that I've been on council, and 12 years for some of you that have been on council for that period of time. We do, in respect to the applicants who are being interviewed by council, just ask if you would be willing to leave the room and wait in the lobby, just so those people who are being interviewed by the council can have that privilege of just being alone with us and not being intimidated by speaking in front of people. If you're willing to honor that, I'd appreciate it and hope the fellow council would as well. I'm not telling you to leave. I'm just asking if you're willing to do so, wait outside, and then we'll start our interview process. We'll do so in about 60 seconds or so.
And Mr. Mayor, in keeping with past practice, I would move to suspend recording of the interviews as we've done traditionally.
Okay, so I second that. All in favor, say aye. Or any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So we have four affirmative, two in the negative. I don't hear any abstentions. So the suspension of the video recording will stop. There is a voice recording of this meeting. And again, that was, has always been, for 10 years, the purpose of not intimidation for those who are being interviewed, because some people aren't used to being on camera. Once it's set up. Question, we took a brief, I think, tech update to make sure that we're up and running here. I'd like to turn the floor over to Bill Weislogel, our Community Development Director, regarding a presentation on council discussion and committee to end homelessness draft strategic plan. Bill?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be very brief. Last week, Councilmember Sandberg asked for a presentation on the Committee to End Homelessness draft strategic plan, and following that for some council discussion to provide direction to Councilmember Sandberg to take to the Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee, or the PIC. So we have a representative of King County who is staffed to the Committee to End Homelessness. Her name is Gretchen Bruce. She's here, and she brings with her a presentation. We also extended an invitation to Arthur Sullivan, who most of, or maybe all of you know from, from Arch. Arthur was not able to come, but he, he and Gretchen know each other, and I think she can communicate his concerns as well. So with that, I'll turn it over to Gretchen.
Thanks very much for inviting me. I'm pleased to be here and to share with you some of the developments under the committee to end homelessness for the past 10 years and where we're going in the next four years. So the Committee to End Homelessness is a coalition of government planners, philanthropy, business, advocates, community providers, and residents working towards that issue of ending homelessness. Over the past, there we are, we were initially launched in 2005. Are you able, is it working well? We were launched there in 2005, and over the past 10 years, we've had some great successes. We have opened and created more than 5,700 units of homeless housing. We, more than 36,000 people have exited homelessness, and these are actually 2013 numbers. So by now, we're probably up to 40,000. We have created some system improvements based on data and emerging best practices that we didn't know about 10 years ago, and I'll cover those real briefly in a second. We have incredibly strong programs. We have new funders at the table, and we are using data in a way that we never did before. We also have some significant challenges. There are a growing number of people who are becoming homeless. The drivers and the economic and the housing forces are really something that we are struggling to contend with. Funding and programs tend to be misaligned with the strengths and needs of individuals who are homeless. We have some old understandings of what causes homelessness and what sorts of interventions need, people need. And now, based on the data, we're learning some new ways of delivering the services. And we are having to shift, the shift, the shift the way we deliver those. And it's kind of like, you know, moving an aircraft carrier. And sometimes we use the analogy, building, building the plane in the air, but really moving forward that way. We have some issues of system accountability. Homelessness is very complex, and it touches the systems of criminal justice, public health, mental health, employment, education, and housing, and the case management services that people need. Trying to get all those systems together and to share data and understand what's happening across the systems proves to be quite challenging. And engaging the full community. We have done a tremendous job of reaching out and getting more connections with faith, business, and philanthropy, but helping the average resident understand how they can touch homelessness and understanding all of the cities, how homelessness looks in their community, how the connecting points are across the broader county, and where your interventions can be targeted is some of the work that we continue to work on. Make no mistake, homelessness is a crisis, and the numbers that we're looking at have been growing. The number that we show here is our 2014 January one-night count. It's an annual count that we do each year of the number who are sheltered, oh, sheltered and unsheltered. Last year, it was 3,123 unsheltered. This year, it was 3,722, including about 200 counted in new areas, but still it was an increase in the same areas counted. Our length of stay is longer than we want it to be. We have an average of 140 days. We want it to be under 30. We want to be much more nimble and moving people into permanent housing faster. And the returns to homelessness, we want to make sure that we, when we get people into housing, that it sticks, that it's one time. The phrase that we are using, you know, 10 years ago, we said we were going to end homelessness. What we're saying now, and we're realizing, is that, that people will become homeless. There are crises that happen in an individual's life, and what we want to do is create a system so that we do prevent homelessness where we can. But if it does happen, it is rare and a one-time occurrence, so that it is rare, brief, one time. Homelessness is evident and found in every zip code in King County. Based on our shelter residency data, we ask folks, where was the last time you were permanently housed? People come from all over King County. The strategic plan that we are embarking on, this is our one, one slide, strategic plan. And what we are showing, some of the significant shifts these coming four years, much more focused on understanding the causes of homelessness, communicating that, and figuring out where our intervention points are. Shifts in funding and our approach, using data to drive investments and programs that meets the needs and support the strengths of people, and allow us to serve more people more effectively. And engaging the full community to end homelessness. We are in the process of rebranding ourselves to the community to end homelessness, to really help people understand that it's going to take all of us. I can't come in and end homelessness for Bothell. I can't come in and end homelessness for Toquilla. And I think over the last couple of years, we kind of sent that message that we could. We're here to do this for you. And we can't, we can't do that for our community anymore. But we can provide the connecting points, connect the dots, help us all understand what causes homelessness, what the interventions are, and where the opportunities to engage with it are. The causes of homelessness are real, and we've, even in the last two years, learned some startling facts that really help drive home some of the pressure points that we're facing right now. A study of 300 cities and states found statistical correlation between these factors. Increases in rent of $100 per month associated with a 15% increase in homeless metro, in metro areas, and I was just talking with Laura, in rural and suburban areas, that increases 38%. And she was talking about how some of the two-bedroom apartments around here are renting for $2,000 a month. And so really, rents are skyrocketing. Areas with high poverty and unemployment rates associated with higher rates of homelessness, that's not surprising. But this demographic composition, areas with more single persons associated with higher rates of homelessness, and that's what we're seeing. More young professionals, and I'm not trying to diss anybody, but you know, moving in, and what they do is with, with the good-paying jobs that they have, displacing some of the lower-income families and those who have been subsisting and surviving in some of the outlying apartments that maybe were available. And as we see here, transients, those communities with a lot of movement, especially in migration, if people seeking jobs, we have the higher rates of homelessness. And states with lower mental health expenditures, higher rates of homelessness. And Washington State ranks 47th in the per capita funding for psychiatric beds. Rather astonishing. To make homelessness rare, we need to prevent people from becoming homeless, keep them in their homes when we can, create more affordable housing, increase mainstream supports so that they can access employment, mental health, physical health, and education supports. Stop exiting people from homelessness from foster care, criminal justice, and the discharges to homelessness. On foster care, approximately 30% of the kids who exit foster care will experience an episode of homelessness two years after exit. Corollary, of the kids who are in shelter, ages 18, 20% of them were in foster care, you know, immediately preceding their episode of homelessness. So slightly different, but very similar statistic there. We need to change policies that criminalize living on the streets and provide alternatives to engage with folks, and other strategies to help connect them to the housing and the services they need. Because a criminal history, poor credit, previous evictions, these are all the barriers that keep people homeless. And to the degree that we can, we need to stop that pipeline. Making homelessness brief and one time, we need to provide people with what they need to exit homelessness quickly. This is the responsibility of the funders of homeless housing and services and the nonprofit providers. We need to become more effective, efficient, and transition towards the program models that allow us to serve more people more nimbly. What that shows is, or following along with that, we are using the data to understand that. We have a typology of a better understanding of how the interventions work. One of the things that, you know, sometimes when I do this presentation, we used to say that for folks who were cycling through homelessness on the streets, into jails and hospitals, sobering centers, you know, kind of folks who had some chaotic lives going on, and we would think, well, we really don't want that chaos going on in our building. So when you get sober, when you take your meds, and when you can control your anger, then you can come into this building. And we have learned that that doesn't really work. That doesn't happen preemptive of housing. So instead, we learn to turn that on its head and say, come on in, here's housing with the supports that you need. And lo and behold, people begin to stabilize and drink less and take their meds and reduce their costs of the expensive systems. We are learning about that with families and some of those who are facing more of an economic issue of homelessness. We used to have a model of, first you get into emergency shelter, then you get in transitional housing, and then you put yourself together, and then you get into permanent housing. And people don't need that conveyor belt approach. What they need is to get back into permanent housing, their own unit in the community right away, where they can establish roots for their kids with their schools, in their, their transportation routes and their jobs. So again, the typology, who are people and what do they really need, instead of having a conveyor belt or cookie cutter approach. Again, mirroring on that, that issue of effectiveness, and then the resources, making sure that we are targeting the right resources towards the right intervention, and putting together a patchwork, patchwork, so that if this fund source can, can do this, maybe the services, and this one can do the housing, how do we get them married together? This, this slide shows the concept of realigning our inventory and our services. We need to increase the amount of crisis response that we have, helping people who are homeless tonight figure out what they're going to do to get off the streets tonight. You may have heard some articles in the last week on KUOW, and some of the others that were talking about the extraordinary and unacceptable lag time in getting into shelter. And there's just simply a bottleneck. What we need to do is move people out through rapid rehousing and free up some of the crisis responses, as well as increase the availability of those. But what we don't need is more transitional housing that just kind of holds people for a long time until they are really, you know, maintaining their own, their own supports and their own rental. We need to get people immediately into that, take some of the funding from that strategy, and invest it in some of the more proven strategies. We still need long-term affordable housing, and we still need some permanent supportive housing, but in different configurations. If we make these system realignments, we anticipate that we will have 2,600 fewer people without shelter because we'll be more nimble. We will be able to reduce the average stay in our shelters and crisis response by 35 days. And by serving people better and making that placement in a permanent housing stick, reduce their returns to homelessness by 50%. The final slide here is that, as I said, it will take a community to end homelessness. It won't be CEH being able to come in and saying, I'm here to do this for you. It's all of us working together, figuring out those elements that make sense for our community, understanding the data points and how things connect to each other, and really creating the message and carrying it forward with our residents and our electeds and our local nonprofit leaders and business leaders. And faith, faith is a very important component this round of, because we understand that people are hungry to do something, they're just trying to understand what and where to connect. And that's what we'll be doing the next couple of years, is really helping to provide more of a framework for understanding. We also are exploring reorienting our governance structure to be more nimble. We currently have a fairly unwieldy tri-body governance structure with the governing board, interagency council, consumer advisory council, and multiple subcommittees. And it's just hard to manage the communication and the flow. We're trying to figure out a more workable configuration. And then formalizing the roles is really being more clear in writing how we'll be working together and what our goals are, and how we'll be holding each other mutually accountable. As we said in wrapping up, we believe, and we have full faith As we said, in wrapping up, we believe, and we have full faith, that homelessness is solvable. It will take prevention and diversion, a realignment of the funding, more housing, and a restored safety net, and engagement and accountability at all levels. Oh, I have lots more data on the shredding of the safety net, and I could go into that, but we can instead get into those things that interest you. Is there any questions, and what would you like to discuss?
Great, thank you so much for your presentation this evening. Thank you so much for your heart on this matter. I know there's many items that sometimes divide certain people and thought processes. This is something that we all can come together on, as you say, and suggest, so thank you for your leadership in that regard. Councilmember Lamb, do you want to start off, and then other councilmembers can ask questions?
Sure, thank you very much, Mayor. Thanks so much for your presentation. I really sincerely, you can, again, please come sit at the table with us, literally and figuratively, as we discuss this. I wanted to ask you, one of the things in the city of Bothell that's a little bit unique as communities is we have a fairly substantial mobile home population. Part of it is designated 55 and over, and some of those communities are in really good condition and are well-maintained, and some of them are not. I mean, some of them throughout the city are not. How do you view manufactured housing as playing into, especially in an urban area, the affordability conversation? And not implying, there are many people who are completely well-off, who are in manufactured homes, not to imply that that's somehow a link to homelessness, but that's been a big part of our affordable housing strategy in the city of Bothell, is we actually have overlays in our land use code that say you can't have any other use of those other than a mobile home overlay. And so I just wanted to know, I mean, you're somebody who works in this daily, you're somebody who understands this issue much more deeply than I do. What's your take on that? Do you think that's the right approach? Do you think we should look at something different?
I think that's fantastic.
Okay.
One of the strategies-
That's always been my-
Yeah, right.
And it's not necessarily a popular one, so I'm glad to hear you say that.
One of the strategies is recognizing the need for alternative housing models, be that shared housing, be that what you read about is called apartments in Seattle, or mobile homes. Recognizing that you can house a lot of people quite affordably in a small area of land, and that your per-unit cost is quite low. In fact, the King County Housing Authority Director, Stephen Norman, has been a partner with us, and a couple of times, he has helped to spearhead funding efforts to secure some mobile homelands that were up for sale, and making sure that those get bought by the housing authority and then retained for the use that they were. Now, I was talking with the city of Toquilla, and they expressed concern about some of the conditions of some of the mobile homes, and if some of them need to be removed or ended, you know, how can we make sure that those folks have a transition plan? But by and large, we would support the retention of the mobile home parks-
Overlay.
-for the affordability, and because, you know, it is also a way that creates a sense of community, from what I've observed. And community is something really important that helps people stay stable in their housing.
One of our strongest communities, actually, in Bothell is a senior manufactured home, Green Acres up in, on West Hill, and it's a fantastic community, and it's very cohesive. The second question I had is, has to do with accessory dwelling units. It's something that our planning commission has been dealing with, and that was something that came from council, where we had a great desire to say, there are people who have children who are staying with them after college, there's people who have sometimes children who are disabled, or who have parents who will need to move in with them. And also, accessory dwelling units offer an opportunity for people to have more affordable housing in a larger, how do you see that playing into it, and is that something, an approach that you support?
Again, fantastic. And CEH would support the, any policy changes or zoning changes that might be needed, and would be happy to, you know, speak to that. But also, we are looking at, what does it take to help two households come together and succeed? So some of the non-traditional housing models that we'll be exploring through the faith is, faith communities are, what are the toolkits, and how do you help two families who may not know each other well? How do you help them talk through the conversations of, how will we live together? What are our responsibilities to each other? How do you do screening and all of that when you're going to be living together, and you might need different ideas of, you know, how you, what you ask for? And then the affordability, what we recognize is that it creates affordability for the homeowner, and it creates affordability for the person who's moving in, and they get to live in multiple communities where you're not, for lack of a better word, you know, redlined, where some of the more affordable units are. We have a lot of folks who would love to live in the more expansive North County area, but trying to find it has been their challenge.
Great, thank you so much for your responses and for your work on this issue. I appreciate it.
Great, I'd like to go next. Councilmember Evans.
Thank you, this is very informative. I think many of us may not realize the impact of this in our communities and things. One of the questions, or one of the comments in your, some of the material that was submitted was that several communities in South King County already provide substantial amounts of affordable housing. How did they do that?
It's more of, I believe, a by default sort of thing, in that the property values or the land down there was less expensive, and so you were able to buy an apartment building for less, and then you can rent it for less. If you were to talk to Arthur and some of the folks on the East Side, they would say that their number-one issue here on the East Side, getting people rehoused, is the affordability. And what happens is that folks who want to live on the East Side end up moving to South King County, because that is where they can find the two-bedroom apartment for $750. So they spend all of their time and their family time traveling. It's not that those South King Counties necessarily invested in the creation of affordable housing, but it happened to be developed because of economic and land opportunities by the private developers, and now they have the majority of affordable housing that does exist in King County, happens to be in South King County.
Okay. So specifically, and it goes on to talk about established MOUs among local governments and founders to align funding. So what specifically can the city of Bothell do? Councilmember Lamb has mentioned a couple of our areas that I think we are great, we do provide some housing there in those areas. But is there a, are you looking for a financial commitment? What are you asking from these various communities in Puget Sound area that you're, and a great report here and presentation and things, but specifically, where do we start? Is there, you know?
So, I think Councilmember Lamb provided one of the best, fastest ways to do it is the zoning and the options to create accessory dwelling units. After that, funding's always welcome, and I believe the city of Bothell, I can't think off the top of my head how much you invest in human services, but I know that I get a figure from my partners in Redmond, when you do the combined, the coordinated funding.
I think about $300,000 over the biennium.
Okay, and I think probably a lot to Hope Link and the healthcare and the-
Right, they're all within that umbrella.
Yeah, exactly. So continuing to do that, continuing to learn what the best practices are, and so that when you make your funding commitments, drive towards those best practices, drive towards the rapid rehousing, drive towards, you know, some of the emerging, even just ask your providers who you're funding, what is your research and knowledge of best practices that inform what you are doing? Just becoming more knowledgeable of that. I was talking with, I'm afraid I'm not so good with names, Bill or Peter?
Bill.
Bill.
Peter Truittson.
Okay. About-
We have both.
-participating in the coordinated planning efforts that we have through the East Side. And Bothell, being a city that kind of straddles the county line, it's been a little bit more challenging to figure out where you'll put those efforts, but connecting with us there, and figuring out what everybody is doing together, because we really have made tremendous gains with everybody moving towards the same goals.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Councilmember Sandberg.
Thanks for your presentation. Excuse me. Do you, have you had any concerns expressed by other cities about certain action items in the, in the plan, in the draft plan?
They have asked, you know, how do we define the role of cities? How do we know what's right for us, and where do we fit? There's been concern and wonderment, how are we going to make this real? You know, how are we going to create that affordable housing and that we say we need? And we say, you know, CEH will be the, CEH is not in the position to create affordable housing. Our swim lane is the homeless housing, but where we can support and educate and help connect the dots on the need for affordable housing, that's where we are. I could go get my sheet real quickly. Some of the other things is, if we are changing our governance structure, how will the suburban city voice be retained? We have been working really closely with the Suburban Cities Association during Booth. We've been providing presentations to city councils just like this, every time we've been asked. And we do have SCA representatives who sit on our governing board and our interagency council. And then we attend their planning meetings as well. Some of the others are, how will you hold other systems accountable? When we say what needs to happen, we need access to mental health, we need the jails and the prisons not discharging people into homelessness. How will we hold that level of accountability? And we just say, you know, again, it's about creating the visibility, keeping the conversation open, going upstream and downstream, going to the advisory council on homelessness at the state level, where they are charged with making some of those connections, and figuring out, who do we need to bring to the table that hasn't been there before?
The reason why I ask that is, I'm a new representative to the Sound Cities Association, and so at the February meeting, my first meeting, this was the first time I'd heard, been exposed to this draft plan, and some other cities had, I mean, there's a lot of really great language in there that I don't think anybody could disagree with, but some of the cities had concerns about zoning changes that affect the, or decriminalize homelessness. The concern being, we don't, we don't want to criminalize homelessness. However, some cities, and I'm not aware of this happening in Bothell, but I could see the potential happening, is people, other citizens have felt intimidated, uncomfortable being in public spaces like our libraries and parks, when other, when homeless people were there, and I don't know what the interaction was. And cities felt that if we had, if we changed this too much, it's not that the desire is to criminalize homelessness, but is to provide one piece in the toolbox to deal with that and to respond to repeated declinations of help.
Right.
And so, can you comment on that?
Sure, I shouldn't have spoken off the cuff without having my notes with me. That was some feedback that we have received from the cities, and we have changed the language in the plan from the first iteration that said, don't criminalize, and now we are saying, explore, you know, work with communities to explore opportunities and alternatives. Recognizing that criminalization is still an issue, because if we resort to that, we create criminal histories that create further barriers for people to get into housing. But also recognizing that what cities seek, just as you said, are alternatives and opportunities to engage with people, and what are some of the proven strategies, and how do we make those linkages? So what we're doing now is stressing, okay, so how do we provide that toolkit to you? How do we help you educate and connect the dots to what was a well-meaning intervention, but now what are some of the alternatives that might both address the concerns for safety and community civility, and also not create the further barriers to housing for the folks that you're trying to keep off the streets?
Well, anyone else? Councilmember Ryan?
So, a quick question. So the one-night count, was there a count done in Bothell?
It says, you know, the Seattle King County Coalition on Homelessness manages that count for us, and they are very protective of the census tracts or the tracts of land that they do. I'm not certain if Bothell, or what portions of Bothell are counted. I know that there is an Eastern North County count. I don't know the specific geographic boundaries of that.
Okay.
The count this year, I believe, in East King County maintained fairly steadily. I didn't bring that sheet with me.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Agnew.
Thank you for the presentation. Do you, do you know how many homeless we have here in the city?
In Bothell?
Yes.
I do not.
Okay. Thanks for everything and good input.
Sure, thank you.
Extremely important issue. I actually served on the King County Mental Health Advisory Board for a good while, and got to know NAMI East Side quite well, who serves the mental health community. Actually, they just had their meeting at our church here just last weekend, and they certainly do a lot. So homelessness is certainly a result of many different things. One of the biggest, as I understand, is the mental health community. So I thank you for your leadership in pairing up with groups like NAMI East Side and others that really are trying to do what we can, because it takes a village, like a past woman said. I think as we go forward tonight, we need to consider, as a council, to give some direction to Councilmember Sandberg. I know my heart is on this issue, and imagine many of you as well. I've had the opportunity for several years, as my church has helped to go support homelessness here in the community, certainly traveled around the world to help build several hundred homes for the homeless outside of our nation. So you have whatever support you would need from me. And so I looked at Councilmember Sandberg. What specific input would you like from council as you go back to suburban cities?
Are there any concerns with any of the goals or actions that are presented today in our packet that you want me to express to the body as a whole?
Councilmember Evans.
Well, you brought up one, and I had it circled in my agenda packet also, was repeal or mitigate local ordinances that criminalize for being homeless. So has that position changed, or has that philosophy changed as a result of some of your input on this, or what's?
The goal hasn't changed, but the way that we would work with you has changed. I mean, we would still say that, at the end of the day, our goal is not to criminalize, you know, being homeless, some of the survival things that people have to do. But instead, how, when you are seeing that in your community, and your concerns are growing, and you begin to, you know, raise your eyes of, we've got to do something about this, come again as a partner, and saying, okay, what are some of the alternatives? Let's not resort immediately to criminalization, but let's figure out, if you've probably heard of Burian, who passed the body odor ban in their, are you familiar with this?
I've not heard of it.
Okay, so this was partly one of the things that helped raise this as an issue, and has created quite a bit of the conversation. So the city of Burian passed an ordinance that folks in their libraries could be removed and arrested if there were disturbances, based on loitering, body odor, and other disruptive behavior. And there was, not by CEH ourselves, some of the advocates, there's been quite a bit of press and controversy about it. And what we would say is, let's not resort to that immediately, but instead, let's figure out some of the other alternatives. They have now increased some of their funding for some of their outreach and engagement, that's great. Also, how do we help train your police and your library folks to figure out a good way to intervene with folks, and to guide and coach and get them connected? So that's the sort of stuff that we would be focusing on.
So I, I think we all agree, we have an outstanding police department here in the city, and overall, I think their intent is to help wherever they can. I want to be careful not to, I want to look for those opportunities that they can reach out and help, but I also don't want to tie their hands in a situation that may require some additional direction by the police department. So just in general, I want to make sure that if there's a way to communicate that, that's better, but also don't limit us in situations where that is needed, I guess.
Anyone else? Councilmember Lamb?
I guess I take a slightly different view. I'm more libertarian in that. I don't believe really in criminalizing behavior. I don't think loitering should be a crime. I think there are people who cause difficult situations by their actions and by the condition of their life, because of where they're at, their mental illness and things like that. I don't think that's something that should be criminalized. That's my take.
Okay. Councilmember Ryan? Fine with?
I'm fine with the plan. As I reviewed it, it seemed, it seemed fine to me.
Okay. Good luck.
Thank you. To us both.
Just as a city attorney, do we historically arrest homeless people in the city of Bothell?
We don't, actually. We have had occasions where a homeless person has been arrested due to their actions, but we have a history- But we have a history of working with the homeless people in our community. And again, we're seeing mainly it's mentally ill. I mean, it's almost exclusively mentally ill people that we're dealing with. So you're arresting somebody that, that you need to put into care immediately. And so we've, we've gone, our officers have gone, I believe, above and beyond in working with these individuals. We had a, a situation where a person wanted to just hang out in the police department lobby. And it wasn't particularly pleasant experience for the people that worked there, but our officers worked and worked and worked with this gentleman. And we've had other, we had other incidents where we did have to actually end up arresting somebody. And quite honestly, it's not the answer because then we spend a lot of time and resources that we are on the hook for financially. So it's, it's not necessarily a financial benefit to the city to, to go out and arrest homeless people. So long answer, short answer is, we work really hard not to.
I'd like to pedal back on my comment about Bothell. That was not meant to shame them. It was to provide a, just an illustration to you of some of the things that have happened. Burian. Right. Sorry. No. Yeah, you're right.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Sandberg.
So I guess what I'm hearing from the rest of council is that there is general agreement and support with the elements that are in this draft plan. And I will listen carefully to other cities' concerns about criminalization. And as I understand, the Sound Cities is not, we're just commenting on the draft plan. We don't actually take a formal action until April. So if there is any additional information, I can bring that back to council.
That'd be excellent. Great. Thank you. Thank you so much for joining us this evening.
Thank you.
And thank you for the work that you do.
Thank you. I appreciate your support.
Absolutely. So council, as we laid out the evening, we were going to go into executive session at this point, but based upon many faces in the room, I don't know that waiting, making people wait for another 45 minutes to make public comment on the next item would be appropriate nor fair.
Mr. Ray, if I may, I think we do need to go into an executive session to discuss the property acquisition matter. Because I think the discussion is a property.
Maybe we could split the executive session in two then, and first take up the item regarding property acquisition, then come back and deal with personnel matters after that.
I'll leave that to the city, I'll leave that to the city attorneys.
Joe.
Well, one sort of in the middle sort of approach would be to take your comment without entering into any discussion, just take the comment and then adjourn to executive session.
I think that's the route that we will go. So at this point, based upon this topic that will be discussed, I've already written a letter, submitted to the city manager in regard to this, submitted timelines of which my involvement in this topic was brought up. And so that's laid out for people to read and digest. And so at this point, I will recuse myself from further conversation and wait to meet you in the back room for when you break for executive session.
All right. Thank you. I would ask us to break for just two minutes so that we can go up, because I feel weird having my back to people when they're speaking to us. So we'll go up to the dais. Bothell City Council is back in session. The next item of our business is old business, which is AB 15028, direction regarding the Wayne Golf Course intent to offer the front nine and clubhouse area. We have an extensive public sign up or public comment sign up. And I did want to say that there, it's my understanding that some people have come to comment on the bikini barista issue. Those comments would not be taken tonight because this is not an item that's on our agenda this evening. The only agenda that is on, open for public comment right now is the direction regarding Wayne Golf Course intent to offer the front nine and clubhouse area. So we can take public comment on that item. And the first speaker on that list is Dennis Scott Skofstad. Mr. Skofstad, if you'll come forward and give your name for the record, we have your address.
Point of order, Mr. Chair.
Councilmember Sandberg.
I would like to ask you to recuse yourself from any proceedings relating to the Wayne Golf Course. My basis for that request is similar to the mayor recusing himself as identifying as an interested party in the back nine through Element Residential. I feel that you should also recuse yourself, given that you are the registered agent for Element Residential. And I feel the mayor's reason for recusing also applies to you.
So I have no problem recusing myself. I missed my daughter's play at her grade school to be here tonight to, to do that. So it really does not, if you believe that there's a conflict of interest in that, I consulted with the city attorney, which I don't have to disclose, but I will. He does not believe that there's a conflict of interest. He does not believe that I need to recuse myself from this matter. That was his advice to me. If my colleagues on the council don't wish for me to participate in the Wayne Golf Course matter and to, I was intending and have advocated for the purchase of the front nine, then I'll step away from that decision and have no further action at all with what to do with the front nine if that's, if that's what the council's request is of me. I think it is unfortunate that you're making that request tonight as opposed to at a different time, but I'll leave it to my colleagues on the council. If my colleagues on the council wish for me to recuse myself, I have zero problem with that whatsoever.
For transparency's sake, I think you need to recuse yourself from this issue.
Then I will recuse myself. Just to be clear, I, I don't believe this is something that I need to do. And it pains me because it means I will no longer be involved in any efforts to acquire the front nine of the Wayne Golf Course or for the city to secure it. And we won't have any discussions related to that. And that's unfortunate, I think, for our city. But I have no challenge at all recusing myself from this meeting. Good night.
I'll nominate Councilmember Rayum to chair the remainder of the meeting.
Second.
So you get to say all of this? Any discussion?
Any discussion? All those, do you have a discussion?
I, I do have some discussion. I, I, I sense that you have a real concern about this issue. And I, I'm concerned that you can be fair and impartial on this also. So for that reason, I, I can't support you being part of, or chairing this meeting. So that's just my, my input.
Fair enough. I'll join you on that. Should we take a vote, though? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Nay. Motion fails. So I'd like to appoint Mr. Evans to be the chair of the rest of the meeting.
Be careful what you wish for.
Is that a second?
A second.
Any discussion?
Yes. My wife said if I got into the, you're going to get in trouble.
Yeah, you're in trouble.
Be happy to do that. Okay. First.
Just a second. You need to actually take the vote.
All in favor?
Sorry. Go ahead. I thought I was supposed to take it.
All in favor of me chairing the, the meeting from this point forward, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Okay. We'll move forward with the first person that has submitted a form here, Dennis Skofstad.
Correct. My name is Dennis Skofstad.
And, and just for Dennis, for everybody, just remind everybody that we have three minutes, you have three minutes. And we would appreciate if you could stay to that. It sounds like we have quite a few people here would like to address this. So that's for everyone that will be addressing this. Thank you very much.
Certainly. Understand. I hear citizens of Bothell complain about city council conflicts of interest. I do read in the city council protocol manual, section 6.01, that it is illegal to fail to declare a conflict of interest. The point is important, especially in view of the mayor's March 14th letter identifying his financial interest in the purchase of the Wayne Golf Course back nine. I congratulate the mayor on his appropriate decision to announce his financial interest. But is it ethical for the mayor of Bothell to be pursuing personal profit from development of the back nine in the face of city council support for the purchase of the back nine for public use? Will the mayor perhaps offer to sell his property back to the city? I am disconcerted to read in the letter that the city attorney advised the mayor that the mayor had no legal requirement to disclose his financial interest. Astounding advice, if it's true. The mayor has a conflict of interest. The mayor's participation in the development of the back nine property for personal gain puts him in conflict with the council's stated interest in purchasing the whole of the Wayne Golf Course, specifically including the back nine for public use. The mayor had no choice but to announce his conflict of interest before it became public knowledge upon the closing of the purchase. But the mayor is not alone in his conflict of interest. Other council members have financial interest in the development of the Wayne Golf Course and other property subject to city action. The other city council members need to announce their financial interest in issues that come before the city council and recuse themselves accordingly. I have heard citizens label as insider trading, city council members and staff taking advantage of city actions like rezoning for personal profit. Is city council insider trading legal? Is it ethical? The city council needs to identify those who are taking advantage of their city position for financial gain and go on record as condemning those actions. I propose that the city council establish an ethics advisory committee to establish a clear and strong ethics standard. I call on the mayor to resign. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis.
Council, council chair, Councilmember Evans.
Yes.
I just, I wanted to respond. He said that, that the speaker said that other council members may have interest in the Wayne Golf Course or any other development in the city. And I want to state on the record that I have no interest, financial interest, other, only interest is in preserving Wayne Golf Course, and I have no other financial interest in property in the city.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jesse Sears.
Hey, guys. Thanks for hearing from me again tonight. I'm here representing One Bothell. This has been a whirlwind of activity in the last week, I would say. I want to make it perfectly clear that One Bothell is here for one reason and one reason only, and that's to preserve the back nine and the front nine of Wayne's Golf Course to be held in perpetuity by the city of Bothell for future generations. Our vision of what that should look like needs to meet the environmental standards, environmental plans that have been set forth, both by, you know, groups like YR8 that we heard about, a few council meetings before that, the Salmon Recovery Fund, and, and Puget Sound Recovery Plan. All those plans are integrating to be able to make this great opportunity for the city of Bothell, to make something that is meanwhile to be good stewards of the land, to be able to protect the waterways, protect the endangered species that we have in our area, and to make an area that we can all enjoy as a community. That's the number one priority where we're at. There's been a lot of information that's come out. There's been a lot of things that have come forward. We've sat here on this podium and have begged and pleaded to find out who has financial interest in the back nine. We're very excited to find out who it is. So now we can start the conversation of how do we move forward from this point to be able to purchase that land, to be able to make it part of the city of Bothell, to meet the comp plans, to meet the park plans that have been in place for a decade. And we have the opportunity to do that now. And I implore this council to make that decision to actively pursue the back nine and actively pursue, pursue the front nine with the options that you have available to you today. That's the only thing that we're concerned about. There is nothing else that we want from this except to be able to preserve those lands. That's really all I have to say.
Thank you, Jesse. Appreciate your comments. The next speaker is Lynn Anderson.
Hi, my name's Lynn Anderson. And full disclosure, I live on the back nine. And that's what brought me to the first planning commission and to the city council meetings. But now I'm passionate and curious about all Bothell dealings, and I hope to be a positive, contributing, and informed city resident. City council members and city staff, I am saddened by what I have witnessed in the last three months. Have laws been broken? I don't know. I'm not a lawyer, but I do believe lines have been crossed ethically. I do believe members' behaviors and business decisions are making the city of Bothell look bad. I have stayed publicly silent, only reaching out to a few council members after the meetings because I wanted to believe this city council was different from other government-type bodies. When I read the mayor's March 4th letter addressed to city manager Bob Stowe, admitting to his involvement in the purchase of the back nine, I knew I couldn't be silent any longer. Here are my concerns. The decision to make an offer for the back nine was made in executive council. It is my understanding, it is the policy to not want to show the city's hand involving property deals. That makes sense to me. But a decision was made, and that decision should have been shared with the public. We have a right to know, and I believe you have the responsibility to share all decisions you make. The back nine has been discussed at every meeting I have attended since January, mostly by the public, but some by council members, too. I have always felt that a few staff members and council members diverted the conversation away from the back nine. But Bill Evans, at the February 3rd meeting, said, "What is the status of the entire golf course? There is a lot of information that staff can provide us." That is a point I believe we should have been informed of the mayor's involvement. The mayor has now recused himself. I asked the council and city staff, "When did you have knowledge of this sales agreement? And could that have possibly influenced you to divert conversations or not be forthcoming with information about the back nine? Are others of you involved in any way with property dealings involved in the back nine?" Also, at the March 3rd meeting, members of the community and some council members have asked for a copy of the sales agreement involving the back nine. Did the city manager follow up with that request? Has a copy of the sales agreement been received? Three minutes is not enough to share all my concerns, so I will save those for future meetings. But now I wonder about other city dealings and other city properties and other city decisions. I am asking the council to have a formal investigation into the city council members and the city staff members involved in all property decisions in the last four years. Do we have a bigger problem?
Thank you.
I have some questions.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson.
I have some follow-up questions for the speaker, please.
Sure.
Do, um, do you, are you able to submit your testimony in writing? There were a lot of questions that...
I was going to make an overhead, but I didn't.
That I wasn't able to capture, but there were specific questions that you wanted answered either by council and/or city staff that I think deserve answers to. And so I'd like to make sure that we get those.
And who should I submit those to?
You can send them, send them to our city clerk, please.
Okay. I'll, I'll do that after. I'll do that. Thanks.
Thank you. Next speaker is Sarah Glarum. Oh, did I say that right? Thank you.
I'm Sarah Glarum.
like to make sure that we get those.
And who should I submit those to?
You can send them to our city clerk, please.
Okay, I'll do that after. I'll do that. Thanks.
Thank you. Next speaker is Sarah Glarum. Oh, did I say that right? Thank you.
I'm Sarah Glarum. In the summer of 2010, my late husband and I moved to Bothell, downsizing to a condo that looks right out onto the Samamish River. I love where I live, but it felt kind of like a vacation home, probably because my kids didn't go to school here and my longtime friends were made elsewhere. So wanting to get more involved with the city, last year I applied for and received an appointment for the Bothell Library Advisory Board, which I'm enjoying very much, and I thank you all for that. But I haven't still felt particularly rooted in the city until recently. When notices went up about rezoning Wayne Golf Course, I was alarmed. "Don't take my beautiful spot," I thought to myself. And when I heard that there was a meeting of nearby residents who wanted to discuss the zoning request, I jumped at the opportunity to attend. The conversation that night ultimately sparked OneBothell.org. And I have to tell you, council members, the positive energy and the can-do attitude that exudes from One Bothell has provided me with a connection to Bothell that I've been seeking. Not only am I meeting lots of residents and surrounding neighborhoods, but I'm sharing in their passion and vision for the city, the city they love, and I'm caring more deeply about the future of Bothell than I ever thought I would or could. But now I'm concerned, and I'm worried. I'm worried that you, the people who will take us into the future, have betrayed the trust that we have placed in you. Learning just last week that Bothell's mayor has a personal stake in the development of Wayne Golf Course was a shocking eye-opener. Is it possible that what's best for Bothell has nothing to do with the decisions our elected officials are making? Is it possible that personal gain of individual leaders is shaping our city? I implore you all to do whatever is needed to restore the trust of your constituents. Distrust is corrosive. The increasing regional influence that Bothell can expect to exert as it grows will be undone if there is distrust of the elected officials. I ask you all for full disclosure regarding any personal stake you may have in city matters, including future development. We need a city government that serves its citizens. We don't need a government that serves its city council. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Glarum. The next speaker is Robert Tadlock. Robert?
I believe that the Wayne Golf Course is a quality of life, and there should have been transparency about what went on with that golf course. This open space discussion for Bothell and King County citizens should have been talked about a long time ago. Beyond the citizens, though, we have another fundamental issue here, and that is, it's called the wildlife. These include the deer, the coyotes, the eagles, the beavers, the muskrats, the river otters, all the things that I see every day in my particular home. The wildlife has been herded into the back nine by what has gone on by the development south of the golf course. In fact, the development is so bad that three days ago, again, I had a number of deer cross the river with coyotes following them in my front yard, looking across the river, wondering where can we go next. This has all been developed south of the golf course. Traffic's already an issue here, even though many of the new homes developing to the south of the golf course have not been occupied or even built yet. The rush hour jams are happening now. I'm sure the three-to-four car garages will help a lot. Emergency vehicles cannot even get through the traffic during rush hours, which now is somewhere between four and five hours per day. The hillside on the backside of the back nine on the east side is also an issue because of the geological slide area potential. How the developer ever got permission to mow down all of the trees in the Piper's Glen area is beyond me. They're totally gone, and it already is showing slide area. We also seem to have a case of real indiscretion here. All the time that we've been talking to the planning commission, the city council, and the city manager, the surprising discovery is that you knew all along. You knew of the possible development of the back nine, and it appears that past and present city council members are involved. In fact, I'm a little bit sorry that the two recused peoples aren't here to talk to, listen to this. When the typical park in Bothell is postage stamp size, usually without any amenities or even a picnic table, how can we talk about parks and recreation, as I just saw in the Bothell Bridge? It was called, "We have a robust park and recreation." We have paved over almost everything in sight except this last remaining open space in Bothell. It should have been protected and defended by the mayor and the council. It's difficult to know if the city council and the manager and other close associates have been involved in real estate. Thank you for that. But I must say, some of the city councils have some of the same names involved, and the mayor finally wrote the letter saying he was involved in taking away the back nine of the golf course. I don't know if it's legal or ethical, but I think we need some kind of investigation.
Thank you, Mr. Tadlock. The next speaker is Deborah Tadlock.
I also live on the back nine of the golf course and have lived there for 35 years, and we enjoy it very, very much. My concern is the ecology and also the hillside, and hoping that we'll do the right studies and do everything that we can do to protect the wildlife and to make sure that we don't build houses back there. The area doesn't need any more houses. We don't need any more cement. We don't need any more runoff into our rivers. We need to protect the salmon. We need to try to keep the area. When we talk about that we don't have enough money, we also look at the new city hall that's being built, way over budget. A thousand dollars a square foot. You could buy, you could build a building in Bellevue, a high-rise, for $500 a square foot. I don't know what we're building there, but there's a lot of money that's being wasted, being wasted on other things that are being done in the city when we could be saving some of these open spaces. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tadlock. Next speaker, Ron Switcord.
Well, for those of you who mean, I'm a golfer, and I know what front nine and back nine means. I'm sitting here thinking, someone may not know what front and back means. A golf course is made up of 18 holes. The first nine are called the front nine, and the back nine are called the back. The last 10 through 18 are called the back nine, so that's my public service announcement for everyone. I'm a little concerned of a lack of disclosure. I consider Joshua a friend, and while he may not have violated any laws, there's certainly some raised eyebrows around the room tonight. You know, mistakes happen, and I assume the press will pick up on this, and at some point there'll be a big article in the Times or whatever paper, and I don't think it's going to be pretty. I think some investigations are called for, and I think some unfortunate things will happen. I'd like to suggest we all just take a timeout on this and just let this mess blow over for a few days, a few months, a few weeks, and see what we can do to fix it. Some mistakes have been made. I think the city missed an opportunity to purchase this. I know they don't have money, but there are ways to find money and to find funding, and maybe it's a joint effort with a Boeing or a large sponsor or some wealthy person. But I'd love to see this space saved. We have nothing to lose and everything in the world to gain by it. I'm not a NIMBY. I don't live in a back nine. I don't play golf there. I play at different courses, but it's a marvelous facility for the beginning golfer and for people that can walk to the course and live there. Love to see it remain here. So lastly, just let's try to find funding and correct this. Something's gone wrong. I'm not going to point fingers. Let's fix it. Let's talk, let's be positive and look, what can we do in the future? I don't know. Is it back nine, a done deal? Is it cast? I know that the sale's been made. I don't know if that can be undone. I don't know what zoning needs to be done. I think it's zoned R9600 already, but somehow, some way, we've got to find a way to fix the issue moving forward. And lastly, as a rookie who doesn't attend many city council meetings, I'm a little disappointed, discouraged to see some factualization amongst the council. I see some taking of sides. I saw a lot of four-to-two votes, and I hear that that happens quite often. And, gosh, we elect you to do what's good for Bothell, and that means working together and having consensus and compromise, and I would just love to see you guys not be so partisan and one side against the next and work together better. That's just my untrained opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Switcord. The next speaker is Sandra Arts.
Alton.
Please come forward.
Thank you for letting me speak today. I sent all of you a very passionate letter last week about my concerns about Wayne Golf Course and how important it is, because I have a vision for this city. And that vision sees a city that is much taller and much more congested, and for that reason, any city with any sense would look at this property and realize that it could be the central park of this region. Now, we were supposed to get, I think, an extension, which was supposed to be signed today at 3:00. Does anyone know if that happened, if the Richard signed that extension?
That item will be discussed in the next, after this testimony here. We'll bring, we'll discuss this issue.
Thank you, Bill. I realize, one thing that I said to all of you is that the finger pointing and the bickering and the collusion, I don't know really what is going on here, really does need to stop because the one goal, the one thing that you can all solve and walk away with, if we can save all of Wayne Golf Course, is your reputations. Now, whether Mark Lamb, who I have a great respect for as a real estate lawyer, he is really quite competent, whether Mark Lamb and Joshua Freed are complicit in these dealings, that is something they're going to have to answer for at some point. But, right now, the most important thing you can do is step back and save that park. Now, I'm not really sure why all you people are sitting down. Why are you sitting down? Stand up! What are you afraid of? Come on, come on, come on! Stand up! Where are you?
Sandra? Sandra?
Darling.
We're trying to keep things under control here a little bit, so...
I understand that, Bill.
I appreciate that. Appreciate your enthusiasm.
I know, but Bill...
Please continue with your, we know, please continue with your statement, and we'll go from there.
What I'm saying here is that there are a lot more people involved in this decision, and they want to stand their ground to save Wayne. So I don't know what else I can say. I'm sure this isn't the last time you've heard from me. I have enormous respect for the positions you hold and the responsibilities you take on when you take these positions. What I want is to be able to respect every single one of you in this room when you come and make decisions for the city.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. The next speaker is Judith Carpenter. Judith, thank you.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. I fully concur with the speakers before me. Our city has a lot of great things going forward, and I love living here. I was surprised and deeply disappointed when I read a letter from Mayor Freed disclosing the fact of his financial interest in the purchase of the back nine. What else is going on that the citizens of Bothell are unaware of when it comes to the dealings of real estate in our wonderful city? My trust level in the mayor and the city council has been jeopardized. I urge the city council and the city manager to authorize an independent investigation in order to make sure that all real estate dealings by the city council, city manager, and all supporting boards have been ethical. If no steps are taken, I fear that the mistrust of the city government will be paramount in the minds of the citizens of Bothell for years to come. In my opinion, the citizens of Bothell have shown their mistrust in our city government as evidenced in the recent failure of the so-called Open Space and Parks Board. Until an investigation is completed, I am suggesting that there should be a moratorium on any building or approvals to build on or around the Samamish River. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Jerry...
Gone.
Gone, right. Thanks, Jerry.
Right at a time when the city appears to have made some great achievements and attracted a lot of new businesses and so forth, right smack in the middle of all of that is cheap corruption. Thank you.
That's the last person that I have signed up. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Okay, if you could, just, if you'd like to just, those of you who would like to speak, if you would just come to the podium and give us your name, and that will be a good place to start.
My name is Cindy Fuller. I live at 9717 Riverbend Drive, directly across from the back nine. And in my line of work, I have to sign a financial disclosure form every single year detailing any financial interest I have in a company that does business with my employer, and if anything changes where I do have a potential conflict of interest, I have to report that immediately, or I run the risk of losing my job. I believe that this should be consistently applied to all employers and public servants. Therefore, I propose that sunshine is the best disinfectant. We need to get everything out, one way or another. Thank you very much.
Thank you. If you have your signature form there, if you could just go ahead and give it to our clerk, that would be great, so we have that for the record. Next person, yes.
My name is Roz Gorts, and I actually abhor public speaking, but sometimes I feel compelled. Very rarely, but this is that moment. And I feel compelled, after reading an email from a council member that was subsequently posted to social media this past week. I was disturbed by the immediate piling on that occurred, by the words used and the way the initial accusation was so quickly accepted as truth, even though there was no evidence presented. As one who has known the mayor for 20-plus years as a coworker, fellow parent on the sidelines of more kids' sporting events than I'd like to count, through his charitable works in the Philippines and Kenya and as a personal family friend, I found the accusation preposterous. It was so far removed from the high quality of character that I have observed on so many occasions, so I went digging for an explanation, and I found it in the timeline of events relating to Wayne's. First, when the back nine became available over a year ago, no one on council or city staff pursued it. It remained on the market for some time. Well, after the city had passed on the opportunity, the business in which the mayor has an interest did acquire the right to purchase it. Meanwhile, the city was in discussions on the front nine. A commendable effort has been underway by the mayor and many others to raise the funds and purchase it, especially after the parks levy he supported failed. Representatives and anyone with an interest have been contacted. Some money has been pledged, but not enough. I see no conflict as the front and back nine were treated separately. So, last Tuesday, when the council changed its position on the back nine, the situation changed for the mayor, which is why he, the very next day, sent a letter to the city manager recusing himself from all further discussions on the back nine and the front nine. So when I think through all of this, and I conclude that the mayor made a wise choice in recusing himself, and I'm here tonight to say he continues to have my full support in his position as mayor, and since I may not have the opportunity again soon, let me just thank each of you for your hard work on behalf of Bothell. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council? Is there anyone else that would like to address the council? Thank you.
Counsel, my name is Dave Keane and my children go to school in Bothell. We go to church in Bothell. We have a Cub Scout troop here in Bothell. I care about Bothell a great deal. I also know Joshua Freed as a, as a personal friend. My children have gone on mission trips with him. My family has engaged with his family on numerous events and I, I know him, I know him greatly. And when this came about, I was deeply offended that people would believe that he was doing something that was behind the scenes. Matter of fact, I feel bad that he's not here right now because it is important to understand his heart. And so, I called him personally to better understand the situation, his implication in the situation. And having understood now the timeline that was just presented and how that was come about by the votes that were taken on the city council and what took place, he is a developer. If it was outside of his wheelhouse that this isn't something that he did and he was just looking for an opportunity to make a quick dollar, then I think that would be different. But that's, that's what he does. And, and, and I know that his heart is to make sure that if he develops that Back Nine, that he does it in a way that is positive for the city, that it leaves green space, that it ties into Blythe Park, and that it does it in a way that would be much better than someone else who could have come by and purchased it and not been so concerned about the interest of Bothell. And I think that it's important that that is kept in mind as this moves forward because he has a great deal of passion for this city. And I think that, that we all need to agree that that is something that he always gives his best and foremost for the city of Bothell. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Is there anyone else? Yes, sir, Mr. Challenger.
Mike Challenger, 21015 Ninth Avenue Southeast in Bothell. You all know me as an equal opportunity critic. I will say that I am also passionately supporting the efforts to retain the Wayne Golf Course in that area. I think it's absolutely vital. I seem to remember, though, for the last 10 years at least, trying to convince people that we need flexible housing attitude. And the lack of, the, the lack of that flexible housing mandate, I think, was the cause of a lot of clear cutting in that area. One other thing, before we get too exercised about condemning all developers, I would remind people, if you own your own house, you are a potential developer. So, don't, let's get into a witch hunt about development. If you look at the RCWs and various other codes in the state, there are very specific rules required of all people, council members, and city government staff as to what they may and may not do. And before we start accusing them of various things, let's be sure of our facts and if, if things are technically correct and legal, then the only recourse is to change those laws, not to vilify people who work within the laws. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Challenger. Is, is there anyone else who would like to address the council on this matter? Yes, sir. Oh, okay. Yeah, come ahead. If you could give us your name, please.
I didn't prepare anything, so...
That's all right.
My name is Long Yun.
Okay.
I didn't prepare anything. I feel compelled to speak from the heart here. As you, I'm listening to this crowd here, I have to reflect on my own personal experience. I'm an immigrant to this country and I came to live in Bothell for now for 20 years and I, I'm a citizen. I'm very proud of Bothell. When I sit here and I listen to people speak about my friend Josh, it kind of hurts me because it feels like there's facts and there's emotion. And you guys are mixing the two up. We need to separate the facts from the emotion and we need to let the investigation and the law determine what is factual and what is within the law. And before that happens, we can't let all this emotion pile on and accuse people and vilify them. I, I kind of feel ashamed here. I just wish that this council here can take control of the situation a little bit, do the investigation that's needed. But if that investigation comes back and says that these people in council who've recused themselves are operating within the law, then set that for the record and let those facts here stand. The people who have piled on my friend and kind of defamed him a little bit here, I, I feel ashamed to be kind of in that conversation. I've known Josh, I participate in a lot of activities, I coach his kids. I can tell you that he's a stand-up citizen in Bothell and I'm proud to have him as my mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Yun. Thank you. Yes, in the back.
James McNeil, proud citizen, living in Bothell, excuse me, Bothell. I'm actually excited about where we are today. I think we've come a long way. It's been a long road, two months and a few days, and a journey that we didn't think it was going to quite go like this. We thought it would be a little bit easier to work with the city, but I can tell you this, I'm excited. I'm happy you guys are sitting at the table with us now and our funding sources from Olympia as well as the Wyra Eight and others. It's important, you know, as you listen to all these people in here, both Josh's friends, the community, it's important to understand that there's 1,300 other people and 46 or 42,000 to 46,000 people that live in Bothell, that we need to hear their voices also. It's very important that the community be heard on this issue. This is not just a land deal. This is a very important land deal that can be very monumental for our entire community. So, I'm asking you guys today to, I know that you're going to be making a decision on making an offer or, you know, reading out, reaching out to everybody, letting them know what decisions were made this past week. But I implore you guys to make sure you include the entire Wayne Golf Course. It has been in our comp plan, at least since 1996, that we can see that we tried to acquire this property. We, the community, 1,300 people with no advertising, have asked for you guys to reject it and to find a way to acquire it. And a group of volunteers have reached out, onebothell.org, and have found funding sources, private and public, that's available to you guys to acquire. So, please do the right thing and find a way to work with all of us. Come to the March 14 Town Hall. Let's do this, let's make it in perpetuity for all of us, for years to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McNeil? Just one question. I'm aware of the work with the legislature. Are there other private organizations? Do you have other funds committed or you've just talked with other organizations?
We, we have other private funding sources available, like private investors. There's other organizations like Wyra Eight that's in support.
I'm familiar with Wyra Eight.
So, there, there's, there's all, Forterra. I don't know if Forterra's actually reached out to the city manager, but they said they, they were going to do that this past week. They're excited about the, the, the plan to save any land along the Sumamish River.
Great.
We have, we have something really cool here we could do for our community with riverfront access, restoring marshlands that can actually help the population of the salmon. So, I, I think it's, we have to be good stewards.
Great.
Because as you, as you guys all said, try to find a way to work with Friends of North Creek Forest. We've gone, we've worked, we've seen what they've done and what they've accomplished, and we need to be good stewards downstream, downriver, so all the work that they've done doesn't go to waste.
Thank you, James. That's what I needed to hear. Is there anyone else who needs to speak that hasn't already spoken? That hasn't already spoken? Anyone else who would like to speak? Okay, we're going to give Mr. Sears one last quick comment here.
One last, one last answer to your last question about funding sources. Beyond just buying the property, these funding sources that we've identified are here to help the city restore and move this property from what it is to what it could be. They're here for the long haul for us.
Thank you. And, and the only thing I think I've mentioned before to the council or to the public is that we need, it, it's one thing to say we have these sources out there and things, but as you know, you know what our financial situation is. We need hard dollar amounts that we know that we can, can count on to fund this. That's all, that's all I'm asking. At some point in the future, when you have those hard dollar amounts, please let us know so we can calculate that into the acquisition.
Like we said, we've had Forterra that, so they're reaching out to the city manager to try to strike a deal to see if city council and the city is willing to work with groups like that. That's all they're asking to be able to move forward with that. Groups like Wyra Eight that are saying they're coming to the table to be able to have those type of things, same thing. They're looking for a willing city council and a willing city to be able to move forward.
Okay, great. Thank you. Will, at this point, I believe we're going to go into an executive session to discuss the potential purchase of this property and then we will come back out of that session and report back as to what action we will be taking on that. So, how long do you anticipate we'll need, city manager?
There are two items, council member, so it depends on whether or not you're asking the question just on the Wayne Golf Course discussion. I'm, I'm guessing it would, you should plan on at least 30 minutes for that discussion. So, I think it might be appropriate to plan 45 minutes and we can adjust at that point.
There was a comment made earlier on the council that we take the Wayne, the Wayne Golf Course issue and, and look at that one and then the other issue, then come back and, and report to the public and then after that, go back and look at that second item in, in executive session. Is that the process that the council's comfortable with? Yes, Randy?
I'm, I'm comfortable with that process. I just, I just wanted to make a comment and a motion, actually, based on the discussion that we've heard from the public.
Concerning the Wayne Golf Course?
Yeah.
About the acquisition of the property?
Not about acquisition, no.
Well, that's really what we're talking about now. So, I'd like to get that into, into executive session, discuss that, so we can come back out and give direction to, to our staff how to proceed and so the general public has that. So, if it's not specific about the acquisition of the property, I'd like to defer that until we come back into our meeting if we can.
It's just germane to the, a lot of the comments we got about investment, yeah.
Well, we'll, we will now go into executive session for approximately 30 minutes and we will come back at that time and inform you of the direction we will be taking. Thank you. The city council meeting is back in order. First item of business we need to do is a motion to extend the meeting. Is there a motion?
I'm moved.
To what time?
To 10:30.
Sir, a second.
No second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. So, at this time, we would like to direct the city manager how to proceed on this matter and a motion is in order at this time for that.
I'm motion to authorize the city manager to enter in his purchase and sale agreement of the Wayne Golf Course Front Nine and give a commercially reasonable offer.
Discussion. I have one question, city manager. Is it a purchase and sale agreement or is it just authorization to negotiate, negotiate a, a sale?
Well, we'd hope that a letter of intent would lead to a purchase and sale agreement. So, I think the, the motion is understandable by me and we'll submit an offer.
Okay. Is there any discussion on the, the motion? Yes, Councilmember Sandberg.
Well, I think we have thought long and hard about this, had a lot, a lot of conversation about what is an appropriate offer. And we want to make an offer that is acceptable to the Richards family, but we also want to give the city manager the ability to negotiate on the, the city's, on the city's behalf to get the best offer for the property. And so, I'm going to be supporting this measure because I think it's important to have this prior to the 45-day deadline and I hope that we can reach an agreement with the Richards family on, on that parcel.
Thank you, Councilmember Sandberg. And just for the public's information, the city manager is going to move on this quickly. We realize we have a March Fort, or May, March 14 deadline, so he will be in contact with the property owners within the next day or so. So, we're going to move forward quickly on this and we'll make an offer and go from there. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. So, that concludes... Thank you. We have another item to go into an executive session on. I don't know, will there be action, city manager, after our executive session?
Did you ask if there's any action anticipated?
After the executive session?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. So, we're, we'll be going back into executive session for approximately how long?
I think 15 minutes should be appropriate.
Okay, we'll say to 10, we extended the meeting to 10:30, so we'll be in executive session till 10:15 and then we'll come out and either adjourn the meeting or go from there. Yes, council member?
I had an additional motion I wanted to make on the, on the last business item.
Which is the...
Direction regarding the Wayne Golf Course intent to offer.
Okay, is it, is it regarding the acquisition of the property? Which is what we're discussing?
No, it's germane. So, I would like to make a motion that the city council attained directly, outside council, to investigate the involvement of and any communications with the Wayne Golf Course owners or their representatives by council members, planning commissioners, and city staff. The investigation will include all facts and circumstances involving the rezone request of the 2015 comprehensive plan update, the first right of offer on the Front and Back Nine, and prospective meetings of city and potential buyers of the Wayne Golf Course. I'll give this to you, city clerk, when I'm done. The investigation will include determining if laws have been broken, codes of ethics have been violated, as they apply to council members and staff members.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Yes.
I hate to even bring up this motion. In my heart, I feel, and I hope, that no one has done anything illegal. That, that's what I really hope for. And with an investigation, we're going to find that out. And if no one's done anything illegal, I think we need to probably give Councilmember Lamb an apology for having him recusing himself. But we're doing this for the city. You know, this is, this is, this is a lot bigger than seven of us or five of us sitting up here. It's, this is a city, this is the people that we represent. I don't want the people to not have faith in what we do up on this dais. So, I will be supporting this motion.
Go ahead, Tom. Are you finished?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Okay, Mike, any other discussion?
I'd like to speak to my motion, yeah.
Sure, go ahead. But before you do, I guess I would like to ask the city attorney, my, my impression is, you said this was germane. I don't think that on the council agenda tonight was the issue of doing an investigation on, on this matter from A to Z, which you kind of laid out. I think what we, we were talking about was the acquisition of this property. We got input from the public. We also got input saying that they are wanting us to, to look further into this matter and look at the various issues and things. And I think that's fine, but that really wasn't a council agenda item tonight. And the fact that we are missing several of our council members, I, I, my question is, I, I'm just concerned that this is, is germane to the, to the agenda that we had before us tonight and the fact of, is this in consideration of our other council members?
Well, a couple, a couple issues there, mayor. It was not added on the projected agenda tonight. It wasn't on the agenda already. So, it's actually an, an, a motion that is out of order because it's not, wasn't added, it wasn't on the agenda and wasn't added to the agenda at the appropriate time. And then... And then the other issue is that while it's characterized as being related to the Wayne Golf Course, it is actually a matter of council discipline, and the council members, at a minimum, the council members that are recused have a right to participate in the discussion and in their vote.
So the city attorney's given us this statement that this is out of order as far as what was on the agenda tonight. If that's just something that we want to add to the agenda at a future date, that can certainly be done, too?
Point of order?
Yes.
I want to acknowledge that Councilmember Ray Yun attempted to have this conversation added during discussion of the agenda this evening, and he was told that it was more appropriately discussed at the time of this agenda bill. And so I think he made the effort to add it to tonight's agenda, and that wasn't recognized. However, I guess I would have to give consideration to the second point, which is if we need to follow the rules, and if the rules require or allow for all council member participation, then that's what we should do.
And if I could clarify, the reason for the rest of the council members participating is because it is, it's their recuse from the Wayne Golf Course, discussion of the Wayne Golf Course transaction. They have no obligation to recuse themselves, and they took from the discussion of council discipline. And in fact, we do have a section of our protocol manual with regard to violations of protocol and a process to follow that has not been discussed or looked at. That's a side note. And so the council members, at a minimum, are owed the, have the right to be notified that they have a chance to rejoin the discussion.
Thank you, city attorney. With that, is, do they need to withdraw their motion, or is it just a motion out of order?
It's because of the agenda, the fact that it's not on the projected agenda, or wasn't put on the agenda, and it's not, wasn't added to the agenda, it would be, it's just out of order.
Okay. Yes, Councilmember Lam?
So I'd like to take a moment of personal privilege, if I may. I have no objection to, and I would call upon the city attorney on my request, not the motion of council, to investigate this matter. I have done absolutely nothing wrong, and I look forward to the city attorney investigating it. If they wish to have this motion brought back in the regular order of council business, I'm fine with that as well. But I, as one council member, who would request, on my initiative, that the city attorney investigate this matter and report back to the full council.
Thank you, Councilmember Lam. And I appreciate your comments, but we have two other council members who are not here tonight that were able to express their concern. So I appreciate the idea that, or the concept, that we need all council members here to discuss this. Councilmember Sandberg, anything else?
I'll save it for the next conversation.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move...
We will go into an executive session now for approximately 15 minutes, so we estimated that we will be back out of executive session at about 10:20. Yes, city attorney?
We need to state the basis of the executive session?
Yes.
I'm not sure what it is.
Personnel matter.
Okay, personnel matters is not an executive section reason there. You can, if, so you're going to have to articulate a little bit better than just personnel matters.
Is it...
Well, if you can help me, there was an email sent from the city manager earlier this week. I don't, I don't know how much I can say regarding an annual process. Do I, am I allowed to say that? And he posed a question.
Okay, if it's for that, for evaluating performance of a city public employee, okay, that's an adequate basis. Thank you.
Okay, we'll go into executive session now. Thank you.[1783.15][1783.15](APPLAUSE).